Montenegro's celebration here in the New York City Council Chamber. The local tour for the data and one for Z.
Proud to be Albanian from Montenegro, you do a song.
Good evening, everyone. Esteemed Speaker Adams, distinguished city council members Kamila Hanks, David Carr, Kristin Marmarado, Shehanna Hanif, Reverend Clergy, esteemed community leaders, honored guests, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Adon Alibegu, Executive Director of the Albanian American Association of Ucine or Ultsin in the international community. On behalf of our association, I would like to thank you all for being here to celebrate the first annual Montenegro celebration here at the New York City Council Chamber. Before we proceed, I must express a special thanks to Arbrir Grill and Mr. Yasmin Novai for donating the amazing food that you guys enjoyed outside. Thank you guys so much. And a special thanks to the New York City Council, especially to our number one advocate in the city council and co-host of tonight's celebration, City Councilwoman Kamila Hanks. Her leadership and dedication to the people of Staten Island and our community set the groundwork for this event to even take place. And if it wasn't for her, this wouldn't have happened. So, thank you so much. On May 21st, 2006, Montenegro declared its independence through a referendum, regaining its freedom after 90 years. And on that day, Montenegrins, Albanians, Bosniak Muslims, Montenegrins together, Serbians, Bokal, Croatians, Roma, all the minorities in Montenegro who call New York their home, answered the call of their ancestral lands and was given a chance to fly back home and vote in favor of that independence, helping Montenegro achieve the 55% needed to succeed. Why did they do this? After enduring unfortunate events of the past, after fleeing those lands of which we are indigenous, due to the unfortunate oppression imposed by the powers of that time and found a home and refuge here in New York City, why would they care to? Because they believed in freedom. And they cared. Because they saw an opportunity and a chance to play a part in shaping a nation where their voices and identities could finally be heard and respected. Empowered by the noble virtues and ideals gained as Americans, and in honor of their ancestors, they saw a chance to begin anew. And believed in the ideals of freedom, democracy, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, as it says in the Declaration of Independence of the United States of America. And in that moment, Montenegro became a nation that is free and dedicated to everyone. Regardless of race and regardless of religion. The foundation of individual liberty lies in the freedom of speech, the right to have a say, to vote, express, and communicate ideas, and the right to affirm one's membership to the honorable virtues of just and noble character. And to the people with whom we share our lands, our heritage, and our children's future. Alongside freedom of speech comes the power to be heard, to participate in the decisions which shape our lives. Everything that makes life worth living, our belief in God, family, work, education, a place to raise one's children and a place to rest one's head, all depends on the decisions of government and the virtues we choose to live by. All of this can be swept away by a government that does not heed the demands of the people, and I mean all of the people. Therefore, the essential humanity of mankind can be protected and preserved only where the government must answer, not just to the rich and powerful, not just to those of a particular race or religion, but to everyone. The Montenegro of 2024 is not the Montenegro of 1880, 1913, 1916, 1941, or 1945. It is a nation that is multi-ethnic, multi-religious, that embodies progress, tradition, tolerance, resilience, and more importantly, hope. In recent years, Montenegro has made significant strides towards inclusivity. It elected its first Bosnian-born deputy prime ministers, Rafet Husovic, Erveni Ibrahimovic, and its first Albanian-born prime minister, Ucini Zon, Dretana Bazovic, as well as the newly-elected deputy prime minister and former mayor of the city of Tuzi, Nik Jeloshaj. Despite the struggles of our people, this commitment to social justice, tradition, and inclusivity is something us as New Yorkers and Americans can be all proud of. With a well-intentioned focus on what unites us rather than what divides us, there is no limit to the social and emotional benefit for us as members of the human family. I speak not only for the Albanian community of Montenegro, but for all the minorities in Montenegro. During the horrific Yugoslav wars of the 1990s, when not just New York City, but Montenegro opened its arms and its homes and provided refuge for tens of thousands of Albanians from Kosovo, Bosniak Muslims of Bosnia and Herzegovina, Ukraine, and others fleeing oppression, persecution, genocide, and war, seeking freedom and a new beginning. Today, they stand proudly amongst us, calling not just New York City their home, but also Montenegro. This is a debt of gratitude that we pay here today in celebrating their independence. The display of tolerance and refuge is a testament to Montenegro's spirit and resonates deeply with the values we cherish here in the United States and particularly in New York City. New York is the capital city of the world. It thrives on diversity and stands as a global beacon of liberty and self-determination. As they say, "If you can make it here, you can make it anywhere." And the diaspora of Montenegro has truly made it here, becoming hard-working, law-abiding citizens, strong social and community activists, entrepreneurs, musicians, artists, and civil servants, contributing to the very aspects that make this city truly special. Montenegro, like its towering mountains that give its name, has never been conquered. And that indomitable spirit is embodied by all of us here today, whether you are a Montenegrin, an Albanian, a Bosniak, a Muslim, a Bokal, Croatian, Serb, or Roma. Whether you are an Orthodox Christian, a Muslim, or a Roman Catholic, we are all native to that land. Our heroic identities, our culture, our traditions, our language have survived the passages of time, defended by the mighty Adriatic Sea, those towering mountains, and by the courage each of us has in our hearts. In the words of Martin Luther King, "Darkness cannot drive out darkness, only light can do that. Hate cannot drive out hate, only love can do that." Tonight, let us answer that call to unity and reconciliation. Let us cast aside the illusions of division that embrace the common humanity that unites us all. As a proud Albanian of Ucine, Montenegro, and a proud American, alongside all of you who represent your noble communities here today, let us declare that all of us, no matter what religion you are, deserve to be respected, a respect that has been earned. We will no longer allow ourselves to be victims of the past or victims of circumstance, but architects of a bright future built on peace, mutual respect, prosperity, and good intention. Our future depends on drawing strength from our shared humanity, championing liberty, and fostering a community that represents and respects all of us. By pursuing common goals with honor, determination, and love, we create a path of peace and tolerance and respect for future generations. I thank you all for being here this evening, and we hope you enjoy what we have in store for you. May God bless our communities, God bless the city of New York, God bless Montenegro, and God bless the United States of America. And now I ask everyone to please stand for the National Anthem of the United States of America, followed by Ms. Sladja Drogjevic, who will sing the National Anthem of Montenegro. As we continue our celebration, let us take a moment to reflect on the interfaith harmony that characterizes the diverse population of Montenegro. It is a testament to our shared values and mutual respect. I am honored to invite the very Reverend Father Milan Radulovich of the Montenegrin Orthodox Church of Vancouver, and Imam Nenamen Husenovic of the Islamic Community Center of Plavkusina to lead us in a religious invocation. Please join me in welcoming Father Milan Radulovich.
(speaking in Albanian)
Dear brothers and sisters, we are gathered here today not only to celebrate the Independence Day of Montenegro, but also to share a few important messages. One of the messages that I would like to share in this part of the English part is that we want to thank first of all this country, the United States of America, that they accepted us here. We are here from different parts, from different parts of Montenegro, from different cities of Montenegro, and again, thank you for accepting us here, for letting us to be here, to live together. And I will finish with this word, may Allah, may God bless America, may God bless Montenegro, and may God bless all the countries around the globe. Amin. Thank you.
(speaking in Albanian) (speaking in Albanian) I am very glad to meet with all of you on great day of Montenegro independence. And I came from Vancouver, Canada, not in neighboring country. I came home. America is for me home. I love United States. And two government officials, very high officials who I met, I told them, "Help Montenegro." One was Madam Lordwright of Holy Memory, and the other was Hillary Clinton. Help Montenegro. And today, I met a representative of New York City Council. Montenegro is our, not our country only, Montenegro is our mother. And mother should be loved unconditionally, because mother is the person God chose to give us a life. Through her, we have a life. God manifested his miracle through mother. Being good Americans, or in our case Canadians, is being Montenegrins too, because the United States of America not only tolerates differences, but encourages days like this. And we are so happy. I, being a priest of Constantinople Patriarchate, which headquarters are in Turkey, in Istanbul, and our patriarchate is multicultural, multi-ethnic, I witness that it is not important who you are than what you have in your heart. We have bishops and priests who are of different skill colors, from different backgrounds, but we are all equal. Why? Because God created us to be equal. And in very the end, I will say a few words in Albanian. (speaking in Albanian) In very, in very the end, I have a small gift for government, for representing of government official from our church. Just a small gift. This is Mark from our church, and you have a copy to remember us.
Another round of applause for Imam Nenamen Husenovic and Father Milan Radulovich. Now it is my great pleasure to introduce City Councilwoman Kamila Hanks, whose visionary leadership and dedication have been instrumental in making this event happen. She will deliver our keynote speech and present our esteemed honorees. Please join me in welcoming a true champion of the people of Staten Island and New York City, the amazing City Councilwoman Kamila Hanks.
Good evening, everyone. Let's give a round of applause to Adon. Well done. So, I have a few words to say in another language, and I'm going to power through it, but dobrovece! Welcome to the People's House. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much. My name is Kamila Hanks, and I'm the council member of the 49th District, which is the North Shore. And before I get into the thanks, because I do have a few people I need to thank, you know, I grew up, born and raised in Staten Island, and I went to IS-61. Raise your hand if you went to IS-61. There you go. Then you probably knew my brother. So what was interesting about that is that my closest friend, I had a very difficult name, Kamila, and she had a difficult name, Alfredidi. And I said, "Well, what kind of name is that?" And she goes, "I'm Yugoslavian." And I said, "What's that?" And she was my closest friend growing up, and she would talk to me about places like Montenegro and there was so much, she had a large family and there was a large presence of Yugoslavians in New Brighton, growing up in the 80s. I'm dating myself, but this is early 80s. So to be here, to welcome you all here in the People's House for the first annual Montenegrin celebration of your independence, with my closest friend growing up, this is how far we've both have come. Back in the day, when you didn't speak the language in front of people, back in the day when you had to assimilate, to now taking your place in the greatest city of the world and celebrating your culture on your terms and having people drawn into your culture. And I have to say, thank you so much for sharing that with me, your dance, your food. I'm just, I'm really overwhelmed, and you know, I want to thank Speaker Adrian Adams for allowing me to do this today, as council member Marmarado, she has a person here, Liliana Peckich. See, I'm doing it. Councilmember Carr, Councilmember Hanif, and I also have Vanessa from council member, excuse me, from Senator Scarsella Spanton's office, a New York State senator of the 23rd District. So today, we gather to celebrate Montenegro Independence Day, a day that marks the resilience, pride, and enduring spirit of the Montenegrin people. This is a momentous occasion, not only that commemorates Montenegro's journey to sovereignty, but it also highlights the values that make this nation a beacon of the Balkans. Montenegro, a beautiful country nestled between the Adriatic and rugged mountains, known for its stunning landscapes, but is the strength and the character of its people that truly make it remarkable. Montenegrin independence is a testament to your unwavering commitment to freedom, cultural heritage, and the principles of tolerance and mutual respect. Religious tolerance is cherished, is a cherished principle in Montenegrin society. Despite this country's small size, it is a home of a mosaic of faiths. Orthodox Christianity, Islam, Catholicism is among them. So here, churches, mosques, coincide side by side, not just in proximity, but also in spirit. You celebrate each other's traditions. This deep-rooted tolerance has made Montenegro a sanctuary of peace and kindness, a beacon to the Balkans. The diaspora of Montenegro have made the significant, excuse me, has made significant contributions to New York City and definitely to Staten Island. And in New York City, you enrich the community with your culture, your work ethic, your entrepreneurial spirit, and adding to the dynamic landscape. And on Staten Island, let me tell you, your close-knit community preserves its heritage while fostering inclusivity and mutual respect and enhancing our local culture, enhancing my local culture. So tonight, we gather here for a special reason, and my very good friend Adon, whose passion for fostering understanding and friendship has brought us all together. His dedication and the driving force behind this event, this is a significant, because this is the very first celebration for Montenegro at City Hall, and it's your house, the People's House. But it is certainly, so even though it's the first, it certainly will not be the last. And this celebration marks the beginning of many more gatherings that will honor the contributions and spirit of the Montenegro's rich, authentic, beautiful community. So before I conclude, I'd want to give my heartfelt thanks to my staff members who's meant making this possible, Mike, Shaho, Amy, Jasmine, and Brittany. Your efforts have made this tonight's celebration a resounding success. So let us continue tonight and honor the diaspora of Montenegro for your extraordinary contribution to the Balkans, New York City, and Staten Island. Your dedication to inclusivity and harmony, again, is a beacon of light and a path for a more united future. So we're going to give out the citations, and my brother Adon is going to help me, because I cannot... because I cannot pronounce, it took everything in my power to say that, those few words that I said. So he will read them, so I don't butcher your names. And we will present you, and you can come up, and you'll stand, and then we'll take pictures.
Anisa Nikai? Anisa... Anisa would like to say a few words.
Hello, hello, everyone, my beautiful Montenegrans, my Albanians, my Yugoslavians. I'm so happy to be here today to represent this small, but beautiful and powerful country. Me as a first-generation Albanian Montenegrin, it's been quite a journey, you know. I think everyone in this room, we've seen, whether it's you yourselves, being the ones who came to this country, or as myself and a lot of kids probably here, being first-generation, seeing all the hardships that our parents went through to get here, just to give us a better life. It's truly, it's truly amazing. And I feel so proud to represent these people. I feel so proud to be an Albanian Montenegrin, just in my career, representing worldwide. I really want to make sure that we have a light shed on us, because we're small, we're small population. I know Albanians, there are so many Albanians, from Shipni, Machadoni, Kosovo. But I feel like the Albanians from Montenegro don't get the light that they deserve. So I want to be... Yeah. I want to be, I want to be someone that puts us on the map and keeps us growing. And we're a small group of people. We need to be here and support each other, no matter what. You know, my dad came from a small, a small town in Montenegro called Haji. I don't know if anybody's familiar with that place. My mom came from a super-small town called Koder, right next to Tuzi. Unjam shitori ga Tuzi malizi. And it's just so crazy to see me standing here today, City Hall, in front of you guys. Coming, my parents coming from these small towns, and then me being here in the position where I get to represent us worldwide. It's just such an honor. And I'm super proud, I'm so proud. And I will say it with my chest wherever I go around the world. Proud to be Albanian from Montenegro. Ydua shong. We are trying to say it in Montenegrin. Volin ta funo. Thank you, guys. Have a good one.
Our next honoree is Vojlo Popovich. Sayad Hodjic. Mr. Albert Hot. The Cusina Foundation. The Very Reverend Father Milan Radulovich. Imam Nairman Husevich. Mr. Albert Salai of the Anna-Malit Association. The July 13th Association. The great Dr. Bariteka. And our last honoree, who's not here today, but Mr. Samir Lazaya.
Now will we be presenting our proclamations to Amr Sekotij, the Council of Montenegro in New York City. Since assuming his esteemed diplomatic role in 2016, Mr. Sekotij has exhibited extraordinary leadership and forward-thinking initiatives aimed at fostering unity and understanding amongst the diverse ethnic communities from Montenegro residing in our great city. Please join us up here.
Pošto oni prijatelji, dobrojču svima. Good evening. First of all, I want to thank the New York City Council for organizing this event on the occasion of the great holiday of the state of Montenegro, Independence Day. Thanks for the association, for the idea, and very good implementation of this event. Želim svima da na čestitan, da isprvi maj, dan nezavisnosti Cernegore, koju slovno možemo nazvati Danom Diaspore Cernegore. Kada je 2006 godine, da si prvo kmaja odlučila da dadu prinos za obnovu nezavisnosti naših države. Naša zajednica, svih narodaj, narodnosti, u Americi broji viša desetina hiljade ljudi. 80% tih i sejenika živi u New Yorku i okolnim državom. Oni su ponos države Cernegore, i mi smo vemo ponosni na sve što oni rade. Poslano za hvalanst majdim ljudima, koji su budućnost Cernegore, koji su budućnost spajanja i jakog mosta između države koje odakle su porijeklom i države koje žive. Mi smo na to veoma ponosni. I lijepe vidjeti mlade ljude poput jednog Edana Oli Begova, nega ču pomenuti. I mnoge mlade ljude u New Yorku, naši drage advokate, bankare, ljekare, ljude koji su veoma uspešni ovoj velikoj državi. Ja sam vemo za hvalan za opriznanje od strane City Council. Međutim, mislim da ovo priznanje je za sve zapošlene u genovom konzulatu Cernegore od 2006 godine, kraja 2006 godine, kad je konzulat i osnovan. Svi su oni dali do prinos, da naša zajednica bude jedinstvena, idima snažan i veoma jak, spoj i vezoj sa slovom atišom državom. U to ime hvala vam ponos svima i želi vam vodo noč.
All right, it's my honor now to, to present the group Kud Halaturko of New York. They've been sharing traditional dance of Montenegro for 13 years here in New York City. Participants of this program tend to range from around 80 to 130 children, aged 5 to 18 years old. This group dances and works hard with master choreographer, Mr. Samir Handanovic. This part of the group proudly presents a cultural style called Halaturko, a centrally old tradition. Another round of applause for Halaturko, everyone. Now please join me in welcoming Ms. Lajja Derlovich back to, back to the podium, who will perform a rendition of the Montenegrin folk song, "Tamo je segus le čuju."
Thank you so much for those performances. Give them another round of applause. I need my glasses, because this is so small. So, my next proclamation is for Jemon Lanitsa. Espadet, sietate. One moment, let me talk about you. Let me talk about you for a moment. The president of the Albanian American Association of Očen, New York City Council proudly celebrates his dedication to representing, protecting, preserving, and enriching the vibrant Albanian culture of Montenegro within the United States. Hailing from Očen, Montenegro, Jemon Lanitsa immigrated to the United States in 2018. Wow. Bringing with him a deep-rooted passion for his Albanian heritage and steadfast determination to advocate for the rights and well-being of the Albanian community in Mount Montenegro. Please join us, Jemon.
Uvaženi konzul Cernegore, Amerci Kotić. Uvaženi kšlanovi i predstavnici organizacije i najveših, najveših funkcija u državnom... uvaženi članovi i predstavnici organizacije i najvećih funkcija u državnim institucijama i svi gosti ove manifestacije, proslave osamnaestog rođendana naše domovine Crne Gore. Od sirca vam želim dobro veče svima. Velika mi je čas i ponos da vam se obratim prvo kao građanin Crne Gore, kao osnivač u druženje ulcinja i predsednik u druženje ulcinja, a evo od danas i kao počasnин građanin države New York. Moram resiti da sam vrlo prijednu iznenazjem ovom titulu, koja me čini ponosnim a i daje volju i ozveziju potrebu za radom izbliživanje naše diaspore sa svojem domovinom. Mi Albanci iz Crne Gore i sve ostale manjine kao i naša diaspora širom svijeta smo učinili i sve dali od sebe da Crna Gora bude nezavisna i međunarodna, priznata u čitavom svijetu, a ubrzo i naredna članica Evropske Unije. U tome ime i u moje ime lišno i u moje familiji obećavam da ću uz Božiju pomoć raditi jako i biti uvijek od pomoći našoj domovine Crnoj Gorji i svim njenim građanima. Da je vjeršna Crna Gora. Hvala vam od sirca i živim.
Da ta širza i rastin elanazi unar šipe, moj sam firt undoruar, kam deri ndaknasin tiudreitojem sonte sekretar kišočatus šiptaru amerikanee ulcinii, dještaštu gasot mepljet krenari vandere tiudreitojem gafoltoria ekommunes metufusis menabot, se čitatar deri i New Yorkut. Kud titul, kud titul meben moa krenar komunitetin tim krenar ulcinin staffin tim vajid, njerzit dašamir čeadoin vendin ton malinazi. Sot per shum vetat komunitetit ton nu kšte lekt tejem iktu, porunka vendosur čemo stejem viktim nushtetin tim, por tejem izotij nu vendin tim vete perfaisoi deisisht komunitetin tim kud dotxindodami. Ne je mi lideret asevertetus. Leaderet avetušujatur sot vendosen tanašojen na televizor, por nejtemi patriotizmi tregoj duke engritur zörin per vendine vet, vete luftuar por te drejtat epakitsave na malitzi. Prandaj ne sot vendosem tejem iktu vete festoj parvarsin emalitzi, te cilert ne evo tuam medorun ton nu vitin dunijas. Pa dušim sektojan momente historike per štetine malitzi, pa dušim sektojan momente historike per popuit pakits na malitzi. Prandaj uni am krenar sot čejam iktu nu kštvoltore, vete je mi džisse bašku pasniloj dalimit te komunitetit vete pasniloj dalimit feje. Ne duotxindroj te bašku, sepsa vetum kštu arinčelimetayona. Ju faliminderit rnovt Amerika, rnov malizi, rovšin popuit pakits na malitzi. Ju faliminderit.
Dear Consul Amerci Kotić, Ms. Councilwoman Camilla Hanks, you are happy always. It's our honour to be here today and I just want to thank you in my personal name, in the all communities' name from Montenegro for making this happen and working together with my brother Edon and getting all us together here today to celebrate the Montenegro Independence Day. In 2018, it was just a dream to land in this country for me and my family. But God plans made it for me and for my family to be here today and give a speech from the strongest city council in the world, which is New York City Council. Why are these flags tonight here standing behind me? It's a very simple answer because Montenegro is not the Montenegro of 1880. Montenegro is not the country of 1913. Montenegro is not the country of 1945. Montenegro is not the country of 1990. But Montenegro is an independent country of May 21st and century 21st that we live today and 2024 that we all celebrate. And I'm more than happy to be part of the history. I'm more than happy to be part of our country. That's why I thank you all for being here tonight and celebrating Montenegro Independence Day. Thank you so much and please give another round of applause to Councilwoman Camilla Hanks.
One more time.
Thank you so much, Jemon. Spirited. So for my next proclamation goes to Shmiles Sardanovic. Esteemed board member of the Islamic Center of Plogusenye, under his exemplary guidance, Mr. Sardanovic is not only cultivating but also strengthening the fabric of the Bosniak Muslim community of Montenegro, becoming a beacon of hope and inspirations for generations to come. His remarkable leadership extends beyond the boundaries of his community advocating tirelessly for interfaith tolerance, understanding and thereby fostering meaningful dialogue and cooperation among diverse religious groups within Montenegro. Please stand and accept your proclamation for your achievement.
I want to thank organizer and especially Councilwoman Camilla, Sister Camilla, that actually is going to go to Montenegro and visit. The only things that we can guarantee she might love it so much and stay back in Montenegro. So where to begin? Few brothers mention 88, 13, 90s. What does this really mean for Americans, for you guys who are born here? 90s for Albanians, Montenegrans and Bosniak and others meant you stay and form a Yugoslavia? You might be killed, slaughtered or destroyed just because you're not one of them. Montenegro has great history and Montenegro decide they want a divorce from monsters. And thanks to Albanians, Bosniak, Montenegro, Croats and Serbs, we got divorce, not ugly divorce from Serbia, but divorce. Divorce that pay huge price by human life happened to Croatia, happened to Bosnia and happened to Kosovo. Thousands of life are lost for no reason whatsoever. We are all one humanity. We all come from the same Adam and Eve and we all need to love and respect each other. I saw tonight so many business people, so many people who are so successful from Montenegro here. And Sister Camilla, the most beautiful restaurants. Not anymore Italian, they own by Bosniak and Albania steak houses. We came here to this country with nothing. We work so hard and we live American dream. We work so hard and we go back to Montenegro and preach democracy. And Montenegro today have proved its the mother for all community, for all country by voting. By voting today for genocide and Serbia and Friburnica. I'm sure there will be a lot of pressure from the government of Serbia not to vote, but they want democracy and they want to listen to United States. They want to listen to Europe and we are proud of people who wants to be mother for all, not just for some. Montenegro, Montenegro is probably one of the smallest country in the world. But we came here in the most beautiful and the biggest country in the world and we find love, peace and democracy here. And our job is to go back and work for peace, harmony and democracy, not only in Montenegro, but through the whole universe. And may God bless America. God bless Montenegro. God bless every nationality and may peace and blessing prevail in entire universe. May God bless you and thank you so much.
Inšallah. I think the smallest country is Staten Island though. So I am going to return the microphone to our brother Edon to close us out. But this has been truly an incredible experience and it is my honour, pleasure and privilege to share your first Independence Day celebration with you all. Love you, God bless you and have a wonderful evening. Get home safe.
I would like to thank again our amazing team, the Albanian American Association of Ochen, the New York City Council, our honorees, our performers, our vendors and everyone that helped make this event possible. And thank you all for coming this evening. This opportunity was interesting for me. Like many of us here, I am very aware of that turbulent history that Smile had mentioned of our communities and of the Balkans marred by ancient wars, bigotry and hate. And I'm sure I could speak for many of us here. We've all suffered in one way or another because of the prisons of the past. On a personal note, my great-grandfather, Hodo Ali Begu, was executed in 1948 at the hands of Yugoslav communists in power at that time for being an Albanian political dissident. And I'm sure I'm not the only one here with a story like that. Whether you are Bosniak, Montenegrin, Albanian, Serb or any other ethnicity, many have suffered in the past and these traumas sometimes take generations to heal. And time eventually does heal everything. However, the genuine intention and pursuit to forgive in the absence of an apology is scary. It is a climb that many do not take. And many carry that hate for the rest of their lives and perhaps they're right to do so. It has happened here in the United States and in many nations around the world. Look at what's happening. All nations have experienced these things in one way or another. These are the common, God-given, human emotions. But so is the power of forgiveness, as God so kindly offers to us every time we ask Him. It takes high moral and spiritual courage to forgive in the face of that existential fear to accept the atrocity exhibitions of the past. But no great feats are done without leadership and without courage to overcome that very fear. Let us all lead by that example and be the heroes of this new chapter. For our kids and our grandkids and for our communities, let us envision the future with new eyes and help those who are in need. Be a voice for the voiceless, protect those who are weak and treat your fellow humans with dignity and respect for God sees all things. And with that, I would like to end this evening with a quote by the late President John F. Kennedy. With a good conscience, our only shore reward, with history the final judge of our deeds, let us go forth to lead the land that we love, asking His blessing and His help, but knowing that here on earth, God's work must truly be our own. Thank you. Thank you, everybody.